Okay.
Call to order the January 24th meeting of the Malmell Planning Commission. Before we get into announcements, I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Darrell, Commissioner Darrell Stevens. Welcome to the Commission.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to announcements, Mr. Lyon, what do we have?
All right, we have four announcements. We had three filed last this month, CCA Lot 624R, Osage Hills Replat Lot 122R, 127R, Natural Trails Estates Replat Lot 1, and then we have one internal staff site plan review that was pretty basic and it's already gone to building permits. That's it.
All right, we will now move on to approval of the minutes. You've all been providing a copy. Does anybody have any corrections to the minutes?
Moving to approve, Mr. Chair.
Have motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, minutes are approved. Let's see, I have no public comments on non-agenda items and no old business, so we'll move to new business. Number one, Mr. Lyon, is this you or Mr. Grummer? Mr. Grummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number one is a code amendment, a request to amend the master zoning map from C3 to C2 for property located north and east of Commercial Park Drive. The map is in front of you. If you'll remember, this request was actually previously approved by the Planning Commission in March, then City Council, went to City Council in April, but in further review, we found that we failed to put out the proper notifications on this, so we requested City Council send it back to Planning Commission so that we can make sure that proper notifications were made. All notification requirements have been met, and this is back on the agenda for your approval. As a reminder, the property is located on Commercial Park Drive, which is across the street from land previously rezoned from C3 to PRD. The request to, the request is for downzoning from C3 to C2. This was recommended by staff due to the downzoning across the street from C3 to PRD, which in C3 is incompatible with the residential type uses that were proposed in the PRD, such as warehouses and such forth across the street from lower-density housing. So with a change to the C2 allows for town center-type commercial development. I will remind the Commission, there was a site plan for this parcel that came in the previous month and was withdrawn. That site plan did show multifamily, which is allowed in a C2 by right, which is an R3 density, but the C2 is the compatible use within the town center area for commercial in that. And again, as I remind you that the Planning Commission was aware of this, you've got a copy of the zoning summary and the analysis that was sent out to you, which is basically the same as it was in the previous month. Staff recommendation is a due-pass recommendation to the Malmell City Council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions, staff? Any public comments, Mr. Grummer?
I'm sorry.
Any comments on the public notice?
We did not, I'm sorry, we did not receive any, any comments on the public notice.
Thank you. And just to make sure that's clear, did you, the public notice is that the letters that were sent out to the adjoining property owners?
So there was a legal notification that was put out in, in the paper, as well as certified letters that were sent to a 300-foot property ownership, as well as signs posted on the property.
Any further questions or comments, staff?
Mr. Chairman, more of a comment than anything else. C2 Town Center, I've read that over, and it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me that we're calling this Town Center. And the only thing that it throws in there is the multifamily, but if you go through the very beginning paragraph of that, the several sentences, it is more for commercial, retail, non-multifamily. The other comment that I would also make, too, I know that what Mr. Grummer said about we previously approved it, I've slept since then, I don't recall that in any way, shape, or form, but, you know, I'm not doubting that that happened. But I do have a problem with this.
Further questions or comments?
If State, if State C3 wouldn't have the opportunity for any type of multifamily, is that correct?
Multifamily residential is not allowed by right in a C3. The C3 was approved years ago to allow for the C2 use, but not the R3 component. One of the, one of the arguments from the landowner, which it's set as C3 for 25 years with no action on it, from the staff standpoint, because of the surrounding properties being rezoned, this area is changing, and a change to a C2 offers a different type of commercial usage than what would be afforded in a C3, which is a little bit heavier commercial use.
Well, one of my objections is that you're putting residential, because that's exactly what's going on here. It's going to be residential, and you're putting that up against industrial, and I don't think that's appropriate.
So one of the things also that staff looked at when we were reviewing this is our industrial is a light I-1 industrial. It's not like a heavy industrial use. The, the uses that we find in our I-1 actually is comparable to the C3 commercial in North Little Rock, which was something that we evaluated on a rezoning that happened out on White Oak Crossing. So the multifamily component actually creates, if multi, I'm saying if that comes in, I'm not saying that it would, but whether if it's C2 commercial or even a multifamily component, that would create a barrier to the lower-density residential that was actually approved by City Council across the street. So that's one of the things that we're looking at, is trying to take those approvals and help this area in a way that's going to be, overall, will work.
Well, you've got the church there, and then the universe, and you just have two spare lots. Currently, I should say. When we discussed the subcommittee meeting, this buffer requirement, I guess there was, you know, the chicken and the egg scenario, that we were rezoned, then would the requirement of the buffer be to the industrial client that would, would we burden that with the C2 designation, or would that go to the I-1 designation? Do you have any follow-up on that?
So the I-1 would be the one requiring any buffering if it would, if it found itself next to a residential component, but the wording of the ordinance states a residential lot, not necessarily a residential use, which this isn't a residential lot, it's a commercial lot. So the interpretation of that could, what, if that, when that comes in, we would have to analyze that, but the previous site plan that was provided did actually show some buffering and distancing between those, those two parcels, between industrial and commercial. So ultimately, I don't think it's going to be an issue on our side.
Okay, interesting, Scott. So you're saying that the buffer was 50 foot from the broad, so the buffering requirement would be on the I-side?
That is correct.
Well, I think another competitor of that is it's not clear if the buffer would be required at all, as Scott mentioned, the language is a residential lot, and the interpretation of that could go both ways. Is it residential by use, or is it residential by zoning? If it's by zoning, then, and that's an interpretation somebody's got to make, towards what's going to be this commission, if industrial use comes up in that, and I can see it going either way. I think I would, I would interpret myself, if I were voting on the issue, as the zoning, because obviously the land use is subject to change based on whoever owns it and wants to use it, but again, that's, that's a gray area, and there's no bright line here, but I also do understand your concerns.
So your interpretation of that, Mr. Chair, is that we couldn't enforce the I-client to provide the buffer?
My interpretation-
In the CT, in the C2?
My interpretation is that if that came before me, I would not interpret that as being required, but the other Commissioners may have a differing opinion, so that, and I think either opinion is defensible. Now, City turn.
I, I just noticed that, I was looking at the Vulcan area regulations for I-1, and it's actually less than 50 feet from the boundary of any residence lot, R-E-S-I-D-E-N-C-E, which is very odd, or from the boundary of any lot used for an educational institution. So I just wanted to clarify that just a little bit.
Gets even muddier.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Here or none, does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion for a due-pass recommendation to City Council to amend the master zoning map from C3 to C2 for property located at north and east of Commercial Park Drive.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The motion carries, and we will issue a due-pass recommendation. Moving on to item number two, the proposed conditional use permit for a health, education, and recreational facility in I-1. Mr. Grummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this item is, again, a proposed conditional use for a healthcare, education, and recreational facility in the industrial park located at 1800 Murphy Drive. This property is located on the outskirts of the industrial park and came in for review for the use as a, as a miniature golf course. We reviewed this item and discussed it, and with the city attorney from the use standpoint and the condition, and it does very meet the health, education, recreational facility type, which was the same type that was used for the jump zone that was in the industrial park in a previous motion. You've been provided with, with the conditional use checklist, and within that, as well as the conditional use permit analysis. This land is surrounded by open space to the north, industrial use to the south, and commercial, PCD zoning to the west. There's been no other land use request changes or offers on this property in the past, the past, the property is not platted, and there's a condition for the use for this property to be platted prior to, prior to a building permit being issued. We found that in conformance with municipal plans, per the Malmell Ford roadmap to guide future municipal actions, this does meet from the standpoint of open space and recreational goal to provide a variety of amenities and public spaces for age groups. We've received no public comments on this item, and from the analysis standpoint, the property, although Zon'd I-1 is less than one acre and undevelopable for the vast majority of industrial uses due to the width of lot and the drainage ditch, ditches and streams located on the north side of the property and interior of the property. The proposed conditional use is allowed within the industrial area, and the owner has indicated they would like to use the natural features of the land as a part of the design by preserving the streams and some of the tree canopy. The property is located on the fringe of the industrial park, so it should have minimal impact to surrounding industry. The proposed use is reasonable, and being an outside recreational type use would provide additional amenities to the city that currently is not provided. The engineering review of civil plans will be contingent on the approval as well. Within the checklist, and keep in mind, with conditional use of this, there is a site plan review that goes along with it, but what you're acting on right now is a due-pass recommendation to the City Council on the conditional use of this within the I-1 zone. The conditions that we have, which recommendation is, staff recommends a due-pass recommendation to Malmell City Council, contingent on meeting all staff, engineering, and planning commission comments, and staff further recommends that the following conditions be placed on the conditional use, that planting of trees at 30 feet on center along the perimeter, any existing undisturbed trees can be utilized to meet requirement, the property be planted prior to building permit issuance, and then industrial area signage regulations will apply for the property. Again, there's some, there's, any specific questions dealing with the variance requests, side setbacks in the site plan, we'll get into that, under the review of that specifically, but from the conditional use standpoint, that's what you're acting on right now. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments, staff? Any questions or comments directed toward the applicant? Does anyone have a motion?
Motion for a due-pass recommendation on the conditional, on the conditional use permit to the City Council for the health, education, and recreational facility in I-1.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? We will issue a due-pass recommendation. A bit of a procedural point before we get into item number three, the site plan for the Creekside Miniature Golf. This will need to be handled in one of two ways. It will either need to be, if it is to be approved, it would need to be approved contingent on the variance being item number five passing, or if someone's still inclined, we can make a motion to consider item number five out of order and consider it before we consider the others. So if anybody is so inclined to handle variance first, I would entertain a motion.
Typically, if it's historical, we'd always done the Boza first, haven't we not?
Believe so.
Yeah, I make a motion, if we make a change in the agenda, Mr. Chair, and handle the Boza adjustment first.
Second. Motion and multiple seconds, any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, I will temporarily close the Planning Commission and convene the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and we will hear the variance request for reduced side setbacks for the Creekside Miniature Golf, which shows number five on our agenda. Mr. Grummer.
Okay, so the last item in your packet was provided a variance checklist. Now, this is, this is kind of modified as we've gone through the month. I did provide and set down in front of you when you got here, an updated letter. The letter that they had provided for the packet was actually incorrect, and we didn't, we weren't able to get it modified before the packet went out in time. So just a, kind of a clarification, the variances for side setbacks, previously there was a variance, and you'll note in the letter, they're asking for a variance on the front minimum width of 100 feet. The, the width of the property is actually under 100 feet, but under further review of the ordinance, the ordinance does say that Planning Commission, the Planning Commission may approve less than 100 feet down to, no, no less than 60 feet on width in the I-1. So because Planning Commission can make that, that decision, then that just goes with the site plan, so you don't have to do that in the Board of Zoning Adjustments. The other, the other thing is, the, they modified the building setback. Previously, it was a little closer than 15 feet, but they did get that into compliance to 15 feet. So you'll see that the building actually meets the building setback. So the only side setbacks that they're requesting right now are two. The one on the south, which is supposed to be 15 feet to the parking lot, they have it at 11 feet, and then to the north on the dumpster enclosure, they have that at seven and a half feet, where on that side, it's supposed to be 15 feet. From staff standpoint, the parking is almost impossible to work out if you go to 15 feet on both sides, makes it too tight, and that's, and because of the creek that surrounds the property, the drainage and everything else, it does create a unique situation on this lot because of the lot width, which is what they've spoken to in the letter for the special request. And then on the dumpster enclosure, staff actually likes the dumpster, dumpster enclosure pushed back because that does create a little bit of backing up radius opportunity. If cars come down, if the parking lot is full, it does offer something for someone to back in to turn around and move out. It also gives, it gives more room for the commercial trash truck that would come in and dump that. So I think, again, because of the lot width, the drainage that's around that creates the difficulties within the site, staff, staff's recommendation is approval of the variances, the two variances.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments directed to staff? Any questions or comments for the applicant? Does anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, to approve the setbacks as it's spelled out in our cheat sheet here. I'm not sure I can say all this, and it make a whole lot of sense, but basically, it's, it's approving variances that would be, had Mr. Grummer just discussed.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, approve the variance, and we'll now close the Board of Zoning Adjustment and reconvene the Planning Commission. We will move back to item number three, the site plan review. Mr. Grummer, anything further on this?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so in the industrial park, there's two items, two things that we have for review, it's the site plan and the landscape plan. Typically, in a, in a commercial site plan, there's also the review of the elevations, but the industrial park does not require the review of elevations when you read the ordinance, although we did provide a copy of that because the, the applicant did provide that, but because it isn't an item for approval, it's more just for your informational to see what their plans are for the actual building itself. There is a modified site plan that's shown up on your screen. There were questions that came in after the packet went out. One of the concerns was the, I guess, the throat of, of that area before you get to the building as a hammerhead turnaround for any emergency vehicles or whatnot. That was, so the site was slightly modified to create a better turning for vehicles to turn into. They accomplished that by shifting the building slightly closer to the creek on the right and reducing the amount of concrete patio that was in front of the actual building. And you can kind of see, the, the original one that you saw had a little bit more concrete, and that's just, so that was removed, and then the building was shifted just a little bit slider closer to the creek. That's the main, main change between the two, but I wanted to show that that modification came in after the packet went out. Otherwise, you were provided a checklist, and the items that are on there, keep in mind that the approval is contingent upon engineering review of the drainage plans for detention, so that's going to be a contingency. And then there, there was an item missing on the actual site plan, the building coverage wasn't shown, but the building coverage is about 3%, so it, it's, it's a very small building, so I don't think we have any issues there, but either way, it should be shown on the site plan. And then the variance, variance requests, those were part of the contingency, which was already approved by the BCA, and so staff recommends approval contingent upon, and it's not a due pass to City Council, this is actually approval at the Planning Commission, so it stays here. So the staff recommendation is approval contingent upon all, meeting all staff, engineering, and planning commission comments, and conditional, conditioned upon approval of the conditional use permit at the City Council level.
Is this building sprinkled? Or is there a, I don't see a hydrant anywhere on the plant, is there one necessary there?
Chief's saying no.
The, Fire has reviewed it, and they had no objections. I believe there's a fire hydrant that's more, that's out on, on Murphy Drive, is that correct? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson, yes?
Thank you, sir. How many total spaces are required for this?
So according to ordinance, the minimum required, if you go off of the, the building size, it would be 17 spaces.
So they're at that?
Actually, they're showing 21 spaces, so they're, they've actually exceeded that amount.
Okay, so 21. What about if we, so, you know, we just do not have site circulation here at all. I know, I know it's, we have a few, but maybe we stripe that in front of the dumpster, keep people, because if you come in and it's full, you got to back up. So maybe we place this and say no parking in front of the dumpster, which is typically done anyway, but it keeps somebody out, hopefully he has good business, and then I don't know if we want to do that on the other side or not, it would be removing, I'll leave that up to staff. That way, the, a vehicle can come back and turn and exit out from either side if you want to give up the spaces. I don't know if the, if the applicant wants to give up the spaces either, and if you think one's adequate, Scott, then we'll, we'll move on with that, but I don't know that we have anything quite like this, and I think parking could be a little bit challenging. Yeah, I'd say stripe it in front of the dumpster for the parking. And I know the dumpster, I know they got the trash services going to come away in the morning, I'm not worried about that.
He also wants to tow away down on the face of the dumpster.
Yeah. Somehow clearly indicate that that's not a parking area, and then up to you if you want to do it on the other side. He may find out that it's going to be necessary.
Further questions, comments?
The other comment is on the qualitative, quantitative data table, he's, he's got a town, townhome, that's from probably one of his other developments. This is total townhome parking, just strike that. Strike the word townhome.
Clarification, says 17 parking spaces, parentheses, one, and I presume that means handicap?
That's a requirement.
Yes. That's just the requirement, that's not, okay. I was reading, I mean-
I was too, that's why I asked. Yeah, that's why I asked.
I was interested, saying, wait a minute, there's two handicaps, and there's more than 17.
You said 21.
Well, that, back to the quantitative data table, it's, when Mr. Grummer said there were 21 or 22 spaces, the quantitative data shows-
19.
Yeah, 19, so we need to get that updated as well.
Good catch, yep.
You should read 19 and 2. Any further questions, comments? Does anybody have a motion?
Make a motion, approve the site plan for the Creekside Miniature Golf, location 1800 Murphy Drive, pending any other staff or Commissioner comments.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, site plan is approved, we move on to item number four, the landscape plan for the Creekside Miniature Golf course. Mr. Grummer?
Yes, sir, so you've, you've been provided a landscape checklist for this, the items that do not comply, the landscape strip shall be located between the vehicular use area and abutting property lines, and shall be at least six feet in width. For item number two, three, and four, it's not shown on the east, north, or south sides of the property. And then item number 10, that one should be noted. Number seven and 12 was not noted or- Number seven and 12 was not noted or shown around the landscape areas, dealing with concrete curbing or other approved materials shall be provided around the base of each plan or area and landscape strip, as well as the concrete curbing. Item number 20 was not noted on the plan of existing, dealing with the location of species and size of all existing isolated trees. And then, item number 24 on the irrigation, they, they provided a notation that drip irrigation was proposed on the landscape plan, but there is no radii showing coverage for that drip irrigation, but typically, your, your radii coverage is on sprinkler. So, staff recommend, recommends approval contingent on meeting all staff engineering and planning commission comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Just a question, in the past, we've been given a separate landscaping plan, are we going to allow this type of thing to be in combination now?
So, in the, in the ordinance, it does allow the combination of the site plan, the landscape plan in situations, it doesn't have to be separate. If, if the planning commission prefers for me to always have that separate, I can, but in, in certain situations where it's not a very detailed landscape plan, then it does save cost on the, on the, on the cost to the applicant, and it is allowed by ordinance to be combined with the site plan.
Okay, I see, the only difference being, you already noted that they didn't have the radii for the irrigation system.
Correct, and we did request in the conditional use that the trees be at, at 30 feet on center.
Yeah, and so, you'll do that review?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Further questions or comments? Does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the landscape plan, the landscape plan review for Creekside Miniature Golf, 1800 Murphy Drive, any other commissioner or staff comments?
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All is in favor, yes?
Yes.
Does opposed, no? Landscape plan is approved, I will now close the public hearing, we will move on to the liaison reports, the House meeting of June 7th, Mr. Smith.
This is the third reading of ordinance 1033, amending the current land use map, and the motion failed 3 to 5. Also, the third reading of ordinance 1034, amending the current zoning map, and the motion failed 0 to 8, and the appointment of Mr. Daryl Stevens.
I think we have one good thing coming out of that.
Dark cloud over that being.
It's all recommendations.
It's all the fans of Congress, how we vote.
June 21st, Commissioner Fisher.
Yes, there was a resolution approving preliminary development plan for Country Club Arkansas, Phase 24, that did pass, it was the first reading on street drainage dedication for Country Club Arkansas, Phase 24, and again, that was on the first reading. The big discussion that evening was on the Crystal Hill Road improvements and discussions with Entergy, which is ongoing, and I was able to watch that on video because I forgot that I was supposed to attend, but interesting meeting, and good luck, Adam City Attorney.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Assignments come up to July, July 5th, actually, I believe the meeting should be on the 6th, is mine, and July 19th, Commissioner Ramsey, does anybody have anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? Does it favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? We adjourn.
I forgot one thing. Well, yeah, I-